All right, I'm going to call to order the meeting. You guys stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. All right, so roll call noted. Tina is the only one that is not able to be available. She was going to try to see if she could get online, but I don't know if she could find a way. All right, she's not here yet. If she gets here, could you just please let us know so we can note it? I'm going to move to first executive session. We had an executive session held prior to the board meeting to discuss safety and security. And then we're going to move on to public comment. Do I have anybody online? Do I have anybody here? Because I don't have any slips. All right, then we're going to move on to our presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Amy Thompson, to the podium, please.
All right, good evening. I want to take a moment, a few moments, to recognize our retirees from this past school year. So I'm pleased to take this opportunity to recognize several retirees at the end of the school year. And a parting memento for our retirees is the Pots Grove Apple. So it's getting more and more well-known. But those with up to 10 years of experience at the district receive a golden apple, and those with over 10 years receive a crystal apple. The apples are inscribed for each retiree. So we'll present those to a couple of retirees that we have here this evening. But to recognize everyone that has retired, I'd like to take a moment to just share their names and where they worked and the number, when they retired. So Susan Kemp is our nurse at West Pots Grove, and she's been with us for five years. Pat Carroll, who's with us tonight, was our gifted teacher at the high school, was with us for 34 years. Rich Grove, network engineer, district-wide, with us for five years. Joan Kabakian, grade, first grade teacher at West Pots Grove for eight years. Beth Major, special ed teacher, high school for 15 years. Melody Milkovitz, intervention tutor at Lower Pots Grove for 14 years. Tony Montez, Spanish teacher at the high school for 33 years. Gail Riker, instructional assistant kindergarten at Ringing Rocks for 10 years. Kim Sheeler, Spanish teacher, high school for 31 years. Eileen Thomas, instructional assistant kindergarten at Ringing Rocks for 15 years. And last but not least, Sharon Yacavelli, kindergarten teacher at West Pots Grove for 35 years. My hope for this esteemed group is that they will find new adventures, time with family, and time to enjoy everything that they love. Stay young, stay thirsty for knowledge, and remember to appreciate the little things in life. Thank you for your service to this community, and especially to the students who served. In this way, your teaching, support, and service go on for years and years to come. Please come back to share stories of your new adventures, and be sure to visit us often. This will always be your home. So with that, I want to say thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call Joan and Pat to the front to get your apples and a picture. Thanks for being here.
While everybody's getting settled and such like that, I'll open up the floor to anybody who has any comments about the retirees.
Yeah, I was going to ask if we could say something. Let me wait until they're done. Mrs. Carroll. Brady sent just a message, and he just wanted me to thank you for everything. You meant so much to him, and I know you did a lot for him. And he remembers you and talks about you still. He'll bring things up from your class and stuff like that. Unfortunately, you don't rank up as high as Megan Delina, but to be even close to that in his world is amazing. So thank you so much for everything. You've affected positively many, many, many students since you've been here. Good luck with everything.
Anybody else? All right, then I'm going to go. My kids were lucky enough to attend all through school here, kindergarten through 12th grade. And as I look at this list, I could see a bunch of names on here that they were able to be a part of. So I have to thank all of them, obviously, Ms. Carroll, obviously, Ms. Sheeler, and a few others. If it isn't for these wonderful teachers, as much as us at home take care of our children, they probably see them more than we do during the day and such. They actually involve their lives and shape our children more than probably anybody that sits around them. I mean, their friends and stuff, sure, but the teachers and the activities they do here at school. So I just have to thank them so heartily. Thank you very much for what you have done. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to reporter superintendent. Thank you for this evening's reporter superintendent. I'd like to turn the mic over to our business administrator, Ms. Deb Clayhold, to present information on our enrollment projections.
Good evening. If you look at the five-year enrollment projection report that I gave you, it follows the same format that was used in the previous year. What we do is we take a lot of statistical information. We look at our current enrollment and our students, and we kind of roll that data forward. For instance, a kindergartner would move to first grade, first would move to second, and so on. We also look at U.S. Census information, and we gather information on live births in the area, kind of like, you know, deaths, which isn't really a high number for young individuals. We also look at, the main thing we look at is we contact all of our townships, and we look at any new construction gone on. So if you look at page three, right at the bottom of the page, it gives you a short idea of what is coming in the different townships. For instance, in Lower, there's a 125-unit apartment building with no age restriction. In Lower, there's another 131 townhomes with no age restriction and so on. So you can see all of the construction going on. And we take this information, and we kind of try to project, like, working with the townships, when those apartment buildings or townhomes or single families are going to be occupied, and then do an estimate of how many children we think are going to be in those homes. And of course, the age restricted is for older enough, and we really don't, we have like a zero estimate for that for the older ones. So in conclusion, we kind of do it in total. You'll see at the page five, it gives an idea of where we think our student enrollment projection is going to be for the next five years. And then past five, page five, it just gives you a lot of statistical information that was gathered, a lot of charts that went into coming up with those total projections. Anybody has any questions?
On page three, the survival ratio data, grades 11 through 12 consistently have a survival ratio greater than 100%, which I guess means that students are transferring in for the senior year of high school.
Yeah, I can go through and actually.
Yeah, but my question is, is there, you know, it's pretty consistent that the survival ratio for the senior year, if I'm reading this column correctly, is, goes up.
I can address that. So in the senior year, we, that could be some students that are retained, and also, it is not uncommon for special ed students to refuse their diploma and stay on until they're 21. So that's what happens in the senior year.
Okay, so that would show up.
That would show up in.
Almost like a 13th grade.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I think, you know, I looked at this in detail. This was an excellent piece of work.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, the only question I had. Go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment. I don't know if you remember, it was probably like five years ago, I think, we paid several thousand dollars to have a study like this done, and I happened upon it two, three months ago, and they were so far off. Just for all the money we spent on them, it was just like. They had this like, you know, they were thinking we were going to be up several percentage points. That's what we're talking about, like possibly the porticoes, sorry, not the porticoes, the portico section of lower, we might have to fill in for classrooms. And yeah, it didn't match up with anything that actually happened. So it was just, so thank you for, because I know it will be much.
I will monitor how I've done on this, believe me. I am not an actuary, and I'm new to the area. So yeah, those companies are supposed to be experts at it, yes.
In fairness to the old report, because I recall that too, I think that was done before Santa Toga Green was finalized, and the estimates on, on the number of students we were going to get from that, I think, were a major source of the error. I'd have to go back and look at it myself. But I recall when that came through.
Those 59 students that we thought was going to be much higher.
Yeah.
So actually.
That would have made it worse.
Yes, exactly would have made it worse, though. But no, this was like for students, like currently, like where they thought we would be right now was much higher than where we actually are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think that, again, I'd have to go back.
The only question I had was, I know the births have decreased, and I know our numbers are set to decrease. And I look over at the developments, and I see three of them are generally apartments. My only question is, even though we're decreasing, do we possibly see an increase in young kids? Because usually, what I always thought was, when people move into apartments, they're usually at the younger age, not developed, have younger kids, and that may be an influx of young kids, but not as a whole.
When I have, when we project those numbers at the back, we do it as a whole, because it's hard to predict when families move into apartment, how old their children are going to be when they're in there. And just as another note, there were some other major projects that I, that I didn't include, and Lower didn't give me a lot of information that they couldn't, but they just said they were in legal battles with, I guess, the construction people. And so we didn't know if those projects were going to move forward. So those projects like that are not included. These are just definite projects that have been approved and are in the process of being built.
Thank you. No, nothing else, right? All right, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion.
Second.
I have a motion. Are we combining them? I need, there's two. I have a motion for 6.1 to approve the 6.1 approval of the board minutes. I need a second. Sorry, all those, anybody have any comments about 6.1? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? 6.2, please.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 6.2.
I have a motion, a second to approve 6.2. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We move on to the receiving of the accounts.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the high school, middle school, and cafeteries accounts as presented.
I have a motion, a second to approve the receiving of the accounts. Do you have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the orders.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the payments of invoices amount of $1,498,703.12 for May 2023 as presented.
I have a motion, a second to approve the receiving of the accounts for audit. Do you have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all is an order? Any, any, boy, end of year. Do we have, all those approved? I need a snack. All those approved? Yeah, Snickers, I like that idea. All those approved? Any opposed? Motion passed. Move on to treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report for May 2023 and file it for audit.
I have a motion, a second to approve the treasurer's report. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 10.1 through 10.10.
I have a motion, a second to approve the treasurer's report. Anybody have any, I mean, I'm sorry, summer hiring authority, have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 10.11 through 10.15.
I have a motion, a second to approve 10.11 through 10.15. Do you have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to action items, 11.1.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.1, which is the 2023-24 general fund budget.
I have a motion, a second to approve the general fund budget to increase our taxes 2.5%. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that one? 11.1, the actual budget. Pretty much after we approve this, everything else is just going to fall online. Comments or questions, anybody?
Well, are we going with 2.5?
That's the request. That's what I'm saying. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
That's just the request, yeah, correct. We never said that we're definitely going with that.
We have, we have the authority to change, but that has been, that's why I've always asked every time this came up. I asked if we wanted to give direction of changing that, and at every instances, we've said no, 2.5, 2.5, 2.5. That's why it's not final. We can make a change, but we had given the direction of to our administrators that 2.5 would be accepted. Now, my question is, it's, this is, this is the, where the, it hits the road. Are we going to approve 2.5? Is everybody comfortable with that? Just, sorry, just to clarify then, this is the same budget proposal that we discussed multiple times with that.
This is the budget that was discussed a month ago and has been on public display for the last 30-some days.
I, I had taken it as we would be, we had to advertise it, therefore, but we could still change and make those adjustments that necessary.
That is true. We still, until we approve it, we can make changes. I don't know if there's a rule saying that if we do make changes, we have to re-advertise it for 30 days.
No, there's, there's no re-advertising requirement.
Right. So we could make changes, obviously, up or down, as long as we stay below the Act I index.
And it has to be a balanced budget.
Unbalanced. So in essence, if we say 2.3, we have to make sure that the money that's necessary to get it to 2.3 is there. If that means taking it from the general fund, if that means, because right now, I think we're actually going to be on the surplus anyway. So we're balanced at 2.5. The issue we went to 2.5 was because our future years are going to be hit harder. And so we want to make sure that we're not turning around saying, okay, we're giving a 1.5, 2.0 budget, and then next year, you're going to have to hit everybody up with like a four or a four and a half budget. We're trying to spread this out, because we know we're going to have increases over the next few years. Remember, though, I did ask the board, I was 2.1, but I'm just one person. So, and I think the majority felt 2.5 was necessary. So I just want to make sure if anybody has any comments or questions regarding that, where we're at.
I would just like to mention that while 2.5 is, seems high for Pots Grove, because we've gone so many years with such low raises in taxes, neighboring school districts are much higher than that. I think Springford is at four. Boyertown is, is way up there.
It's a three.
Yeah, so, I mean, everybody's feeling the pinch, and we're just lucky that we have been able to maintain throughout the last. have been able to maintain throughout the last eight years or so, doing minimal raises. And, and this year, just, I mean, it seems really high, but I think, I do think it is necessary to keep us on track with all of the, the projects we have coming up.
In general, there's two reasons why the request went to 2.5. First reason being that we wanted to make sure we were more competitive for our teachers and our salary contract, which we just agreed to earlier this year. And we raised some salaries up to make sure we were going to be competitive, especially in the lower steps, where we were uncompetitive with other districts, which was causing us to lose a lot of people. The second reason was, obviously, we know that the 50-plus million dollars to maintain the five buildings is going to hit us. I mean, we already are going to be ready to approve something like $8 million for a geothermal system that's going to be, take a nice little chunk out of everything right there. So, that's why the request was 2.5.
Yeah, just a second, what Ashley said. 2.5 for us is high. It's, I think it's the largest tax increase since I got on the board, but compared to other districts, we're going to come out at the low end of the, of the rate, of the tax increases, and I think we're in, got to be in good shape, because we're looking at serious improvements in West and various other improvements along the road that entail billions of dollars worth of expenses, and we're in good shape to, to be able to maintain our competitiveness, both within, for hiring people, and our competitiveness as a neighborhood or a community where the taxes are reasonable. So, I think this represents a balance. You know, nobody likes raising taxes. I didn't run for school board to raise taxes. I don't, I'm sure you didn't, and I don't think anybody here does, but it's, it's a necessity. We've got, we inherited these buildings. We're not responsible for them, for the architectural things that caused problems, but we've got to maintain the buildings and we've, for the sake of our kids. Because these are the places where our kids are building their memories. This is what they're going to get, their edu, where they're going to get their education and their start. And so, this is what it's all about. You know, yeah, I, I, every day, I get a letter from some real estate agent, no offense, Ashley, but some real estate agent who wants to buy my house, and says, gee, look at all the cash you'd get. Well, yeah, okay, my answer is, number one, if I sell my house, what am I going to live in? A tent? I don't, you know, I need a replacement house, so I'm not going to get a, get a big bonus by selling my house and moving someplace else. Same thing here. We've got to maintain these buildings, you know, and we've got to, to do stuff to spend $8 million for roofs and whatnot. And I'm sorry, but that's the way it is, and it's, you know, it may not be nice. I, you know, I'm certainly not going to be happy that I'm paying 2.5% more. And when I get home, my wife is probably going to be complaining about the effects of that on our real estate taxes, but so be it. So, I think this is the best course for the district and the people of the district and the kids, which is why this district exists. Thank you.
And, and if I could just interject too, ESSER money, our federal funding of 1.6 million is going to go away in, in the following year. So, to, for us to raise 1.6 million to cover the ESSER funds going away, that would include a 4% increase. So, that's why, instead of, you know, I don't think we'd ever get net, the following year in '24, '25, we wouldn't even be able to raise that much money up to the index to cover the ESSER money going away, plus the increases in our employment contracts and benefits, and just with the cost of everything going up.
To be awfully blunt, you wouldn't get a 4% increase through this board.
Exactly. So, it's better to even it out.
One thing I do want, everybody here probably understands, but this for the public as well, that when we say that other districts are going up higher than us, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going up 2.5, that Springfield going up four is a 1.5 difference. Our millage is higher than their millage, so the idea is, although they may be going up 4%, we're going up 2.5%, are we gaining in millage? I checked the numbers from what I saw. Obviously, everybody hasn't approved. We would still gain millage. So, we would gain millage on everybody but Pottstown. Pottstown's a zero. They're, they're going to approve a zero increase, so we can't gain anything on them. My goal's always been to make us more competitive to the other areas. And so, each year, we've gained millage. Now, it's not a lot this year. We've gained more in the past, but we're still gaining millage towards the other districts, which of course helps separate that gap. So, that is out there, obviously, for the public also to know. We're trying to gain the millage to help them. If they haven't seen, it's obviously posted on here, and then, I think in a couple of seconds, it's going to be posted in here. It's about $117 per year increase on anybody that's assessed, $120,000. That's what it's going to amount to. Anybody else have any comments before we go to vote? Or, does anybody want to change? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to next item.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.2 through 11.4.
I have a motion, a second to approve 11.2 through 11.4. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to 11.5.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.5, the transportation contract.
I have a motion, a second to approve the transportation contract. Have any comments or questions on that one? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to 11.6.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.6 through 11.18. I feel like I'm doing bingo, or here. 11.6 through 11.18.
I have a motion, a second to approve 11.6 through 11.18. Have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to 11.19.
I would like to make a motion that we approve 11.19 through 11.21 with an explanation for the community.
I have a motion, a second to approve 11.19, 11.20. Any comments or questions on those?
I do have a, the Head Start program is the one that we applied for a grant, correct? But I know this is through Montgomery ICU, so just.
No, the Head Start program is a pre-K program that's run by the MCIU using our buildings. We approve for pre-K counts.
Pre, okay, that was, thank you.
Different bucket of money.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 11.21, we actually have an amendment to that. Dr. Finnery.
So, 11.21 is authorization to move on three summer projects. Our typical, our typical pathway for approving construction projects or capital improvement has been to present at the Facilities and Operations Committee, and then, once we get approval there, to bring it to this committee. The work of that committee has been almost entirely focused on our GISA projects, working with CMTA. These are three projects that we, that we want to do. One is a part of a safety grant. They're, all three of them are needed. The reason I asked for this, this item to be treated separately is, we are also working on our PA system at Lower Elementary, and that was previously approved by the board. We've recently learned that some equipment changes need to be made that are going to result in a, an additional $11,000 or so. So, I'd like to amend this motion to also address that.
So, is that the 41?
So, we're at, what?
No, it's the loading dock, so it's.
Eighty, 110 plus 120.
So, just add on 11,000.
Yeah, so like 141.
Okay. So, he wants to change the motion to add on an $11,000 piece for the?
For the, the change order at Lower.
And I would just note for the record that the reason for the, the amendment to the agenda after the 24-hour notice is because this item just came to our attention and needs action prior to the next board meeting.
Correct.
And we don't meet again until August, and this needs to be taken care of. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? Because we made an amendment, do we have that public comment?
I would, yes, I would open it for public comment on that issue.
Okay. So, because we made an amendment and we're increasing a budget by $11,000, does anybody here have public comment? Anybody online? I'll give them a second or two, just in case, because we are amending something to increase costs.
I'm not seeing anything.
All right, then we're going to.
Attached to the administrative comment, a content to this item is a presentation that we're, we're happy to make, if that would please the board.
I don't need it, unless someone else needs it.
You're talking about the PowerPoint?
PowerPoint that's included.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
It's, yeah.
All right. Dr. Nibbert, you have a question?
No, I have no, yeah, this is, I have no question.
Okay. Do we have any, no questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with the additional. We're going to move on to action items, 12.1.
I'd like to make a motion, action items under education, we approve 12.1 through 12.6.
I have a motion, a second to approve 12.1 through 12.6. Do we have any comments or questions on that?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think it's wonderful that we offer these conferences to all of our teachers administration, just better than themselves. I think it's great.
Any other comments? All right, I'll make one. I want to thank the curriculum team. You guys continue, year after year, since we, I came on board to upping our, let's say, our, not only our competitiveness, but also our overall academic rigor, to make sure that we're meeting our students and giving them even more than they had prior. So, I appreciate all the work that everybody has done, obviously Mr. Ruiz, and such like that, and the team here that's on the curriculum team as well. All right, so thank you very much. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes, please.
I'd like to make a motion, under policies, we approve 13.1.
I have a motion, a second to approve the policies submitted. Anybody have any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to JOC report.
Thank you, Al. Again, we're just moving forward with a great team of the JOCs over there. So, we had a presentation of a book library that was made by Kalen Adair, who is a junior from Upper Perk, and she's enrolled in our carpentry program. The Upper Perk Yomen Rotary Club reached out to Mr. Levingood to see if the Western Center could assist with the project to make a book library. And of course, we all got to see this amazing project that she did. It was phenomenal. Kalen, who was recovering from her concussion, had missed class skills learning time, and she was grateful to be asked to be part of the library project. With the direction of Mr. Nathan Miller, our carpentry instructor, they devised a plan. With enthusiasm, she was able to develop the skills that were missed during her classroom time. Kalen went above and beyond the scope of the project by adding roofing tiles and trim on the project. The book library will, will have the, the finishing touches of the Western Center logo and Kalen's name that will all be showcased. And I think for us as board members, it's just so nice to see our students, you know, build something like that and, and take on a project. I mean, here, I think she was a ball player, got hit in the head, had a concussion, and she was out. And so, again, the community all came together, and the Western Center teachers and administration all came in and helped, and it was just wonderful. So, she did the whole presentation herself, and we were just thrilled to see it. So, it was very, very nice. Did you want to add anything to that or anything? No?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, just briefly, this is the meeting we, Jay and I arrived at late because.
Oh, you mean the senior recognition?
Yeah. Yeah, and we were there. I caught your speech, and I thought that was excellent speech, and it was drier than our graduations.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. So, then, Mr. Levingood presented the enrollment data for 2023-24 school year, and we have acceptance rates for the following. Potts Grove, 73%, Springfield, 78%, and Upper Perk is 75%. The total students accepted by the district, we have, Potts Grove has 174, Springfield has 233, and Upper Perk has 327. Yeah, so. Then we discussed some programs that we might be looking into for like around 2028. Vet Tech was mentioned, motorsports, and aircraft technician. So, I was pretty impressed with that. It was suggested that a goal statement be created for future expansion. It was asked that Mr. Levingood develop the statement and share it with the group for individual feedback. So, we're always looking to change what's, what's going to be out there, where can we fit classrooms that maybe we don't have enough, but we have room over here. So, over the summer, they're going to switch around some of the classrooms, and, but he's always thinking of ways to better the school. Then Mr. Holtzman, who's our ex vice, principal? Principal, yeah. He presented the school safety, security survey with us, and we had, although the incidents did increase this year, but we also saw the number of increased students. So, there was eight incidents, seven suspension, and 35 written up for discipline. Let's see, what else? We also had, Mr. Holtzman displayed some of the JOC flyers and brochures that our co-op students from Commercial Arts had created, and that was Haley Howe. And this is when they go to the other schools, they have all nice brochures and flyers and what each class requires and what it's all about. So, we had that, and Mr. Levingood informed the JOC that we will be installing the Raptor system in the next two weeks, which is a school safety. New orient, student orientation was a huge success, and it was very well attended. We had our senior awards and recognition ceremony that went really well. I think next year, I'll go to Springfield, which is good, because we were kind of cramped in there. We had people standing. The policy advisory group, I said we're going to start policies and start having subcommittees meetings like we do here, and we're going to meet over the summer. So, unless you guys have anything to add?
I have nothing.
Yeah, you good?
I'm okay.
Good, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the committee items. I have, I need a motion for the minutes for operations. I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes for the operations committee meeting. Anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Curriculum report, please. Tina's not here. Who... is anybody doing it from...
Dan.
Tina, you're on the hot spot anyway.
Thank you for that. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. McIntyre asked that I report out on the minutes from our Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee meeting. That occurred on May twenty-third. We had five agenda items, one of which you've already approved tonight, which was the math curriculum renewal, so I won't spend much time talking about that. In addition to that, we talked about the Falcon... what we call our Falcon Academy, which is our alternative education for disruptive youth. So, Dr. Lucas provided a report on that with the intention to close our current programming of what that is. Again, that is for disruptive youth, and that's for students in grades six through twelve. We've already been in contact with Pennsylvania Department of Education. They are support... in support of that closure. But in its place, two new programs will come alive, so to speak. Those will be also alternative education programs, really following supportive proactive approaches to education. One of those will be at Pots Grove Middle School. That will occur during the school day for next school year, and that will occur using existing staff. The second will occur as a Twilight program at the high school for next year. However, moving beyond that period of time, we'd like to examine also having that occur during the school day as well. In addition to that, we also talked about the new unveiling of the Pots Grove School District website. So, Mr. Bitler provided a report on that. Really, a major goal there is to streamline the appearance of that. Various departments right now are working with both Mr. Bitler and Mrs. Sobolski... or Ms. Sobolski in thinking about what those pages should look like with the unveiling of that new website to occur on August first. That's our hope for that. In addition to that, we also talked about the elementary report card, making revisions to that. There's been multiple groups, teacher groups, that have occurred, providing various feedback loops about what that could look like with an end goal of providing really clear, concise information to parents without overwhelming families at the same time. So, our teachers continue to work on that. We're making some final revisions to that. I have a teacher group working this week, as a matter of fact, working to finalize that as well. We already have a family and communication guide that is prepared with some frequently asked questions that we'll be ready to work with in the fall when we have that new report card in place. The benefit there is that's really moving to use Power School, much like our secondary schools do. So, that provides a whole bunch of benefits for our elementary staff as well. Dr. Lucas provided an update on the REACH program, which is through Springfield Psychological. Right now, that's supporting ten students at Ringing Rocks and ten students at Lower Pots Grove Elementary. And that's really providing intensive school-based therapy programs, really addressing social, emotional, learning types of things, as well as academic success. And that occurs during the school day, and I know you've heard a little bit about that from Dr. Lucas and from others throughout the school year. What we've noticed as a result of that is suspensions among students who are involved have decreased, but their academic skills and social skills have increased. So, those are all wonderful benefits to have as a result of that. That contract will be renewed for next school year to continue those services as well. Embedded within that is a lot of professional learning that our staff is benefiting from, for those... from those individuals as well, to learn about trauma-informed education, working with students who are coming from trauma in any case, shape, or form. Anybody who was at the CIT committee, did I miss anything?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to policy committee report.
All right, for the last policy meeting of the school year, it was very simple. The first half, we spoke about the policies that we reviewed and approved or modified over the year. And then, we discussed for new business, policy two fifty-one, which is for students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instabilities. One line was removed. It was legal counsel reviewed it and found one line was a little bit too open, so it was removed. Otherwise, the policy remained the same. So, that was it for policy that one.
And any of any questions? Hearing none. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item. Shoot, I lost my spot. We're gonna put in for new business, because I have to authenticate again. So, we're just gonna move on to new business. I know we have something on here, adult meal prices. So, we have... I don't know how we even discuss this or approve this, or what do we do with this? It's only four cents.
So, this is on there simply to memorialize that we had to raise prices. We were directed by the... I'll let Dev answer.
Adult meal prices, when you're in the national school lunch program, adult meal prices have to be so much a percent, so much higher than the student meals. And the student meals haven't changed. This... they were four dollars and ten cents, but during this past school year, the state came in and said, "Well, really, it should be four dollars and eleven cents." So, we had to increase it to four dollars and eleven cents. And the nutrition group approached me and said, "Well, can we make it four dollars and fifteen cents now just to make sure that they're not giving pennies out when adults go through the line?" And so, that's the story.
So, I do have new business that I would like to discuss. So, what I... just briefly, I got an email from Diane Cherco about Dr. Lawrence Gribb, who is a dentist, and he served the community and has been affiliated with Pots Grove for thirty-five years. And he is retiring, retired in March. So, he's worked with our students for thirty-five years. And that, and also, a tweet that I got from... or a message I got from our friend Joe Zlomak at Santa Toca Post, another fantastic Pots Grovean who personally has meant a lot to me, my two years here. And I've enjoyed very much reading his Santa Toca posts and all of his participation on various committees. And he has announced that he is... I think he's officially retired as of today.
The fourteenth. Yeah, tomorrow, I think.
Okay. So, with those two pieces of information, it's my intent to work with the Community Relations Committee to come up with some way to recognize... We do recognize athletes, and we recognize students, and we recognize alumni. I think it would also be nice to recognize volunteers and people that participate and are meaningful to our district in other ways. So, I'd like to start that conversation at the next Community Relations meeting. But thank you to those two gentlemen.
We're gonna move on. Patty?
I just would like to say, graduation when we came, it was rained out. But I have to give... I have to give everybody credit because we were laughing, we were soaking wet, we made the best of it. And then, our custodians, I guess, had the gym beautiful, ready to go, and outside was beautiful. And sometimes, they don't always get recognized because they're just behind the scenes doing it all. So, everybody who was a part of graduation, it was a wonderful graduation, and congratulations again to all our seniors.
And I think also, we should include the two gentlemen. Go ahead, okay.
Dr. Nipert?
Yeah, I have one thing, if my voice holds out. Dr. Finnerty mentioned Joe Zlomak, and I personally have worked with numerous people associated with journalism over the last several decades, both print journalists, radio, and a few television journalists. And Joe has been here. He's among the best journalists I've ever met. He's been fair, he's been honest, he's knowledgeable, which, when I started out many years ago, the journal... the reporter for the local newspaper would show up without a pen, without a paper, and he would write notes from memory. And his memory wasn't that good. And we had lots of... but Joe has done an excellent job, and I agree, we should do something for someone like Joe, who has given us lots of good press. So, I want to encourage that. And I also want to encourage our kids who... I like the word for graduation that's fallen out of fashion. The word is commencement. Commencement means beginning. Graduation is an end. It's... you're focusing on the good times you had, and for this class of 2023, there weren't too many good times, other than the pumpkin skies of last week, or the rain that came at the wrong time of graduation, or two years of COVID. But I think these kids have had a tremendous experience from this district, and they'll be a credit to themselves and to this community as they go forward. And they shouldn't think about the crappy things that happened, the mics that didn't work during the theater, or the storm that happened, or, "Good Lord, I drove home..." You know, after forty graduations, including those at Widener, I actually left one early. And when I got home, and I told a couple people this, I undressed and literally wrang my clothes out. And there was a puddle on the floor from how wet I was, and that's why I didn't miss the first graduation in forty-plus years at here and elsewhere. But, you know, the class of twenty-three had a crappy deal. And that's why you want to focus on commencement, because tomorrow is gonna be better because you've had this experience, and you've learned to survive. So, those are my two comments, and I want to thank you.
Moving on around the gym?
Actually, two items. While out with Becky this weekend running some errands, I happened to run into Joe Zlomak and his wife. He called me over, we were talking about, and he was saying, you know, moving on and thanked us on. He was... his wife was very enthusiastic about him retiring, so she was very happy. And he said, "Well," you know, he'd been getting up at three o'clock in the morning for quite a few years, so she was very happy about it. She nodded quite a bit at that, so... But they were very much looking forward to getting on with their life, second part of their life, so I want to mention that. The other thing I want to mention is something actually from much earlier in this year that I always forget about and try to remember for this evening. Our teachers, for one of the projects they did this year, they had students at the elementary school draw up just like some sort of like creature, monster type thing, just for fun. But then, they gave it to a couple of the high school classes and had those high school students interpret what the students did at the elementary level. And then, they could do, like my daughter did, pieces of pottery, others drew different things to take what these young kids came up with, and then they interpreted and came up with their own artwork. And I just thought that was such a great collaboration. I've been meaning to mention it, but I thought it was such a great idea to do that, you know, because it... you know, the young kids and the older kids. So, I just want to send that out to our teachers. I thought that was very, very creative.
Bill? Ashley? And then comes out to me. The end of the year is always important to me because a lot of thanks needs to be given out. Obviously, the board here deserves appreciation to all you guys have done throughout the year. The graduates, congratulations on those. But I do want to give out some special appreciation. What I felt was appreciative is first to Mr. Steve Anzbach, Dr. Smith, and Dr. Finnerty in how the three of them handled the graduation and how quickly they got to getting the kids set up, getting everything organized and such like that. They did a very commendable job in a situation that needed some quick thinking and some quick action. Also, to the administrators, who all jumped in and helped because it was very chaotic in that gym, and I appreciate each and every one of them. I hope you guys didn't get a little upset with me when I was telling you guys what to do, because that's not my job, that's his job, but he wasn't there. So, I appreciate all of what you all did. Obviously, Gus and PCDV, in the fact that you guys were able to get all that equipment into the gym in forty-five minutes, get it all done, get everything set up, speakers, mics, video, get the video as best we could into the other room. I appreciate that as well. I mean, so thank you very much. But the final thank you from me goes out to the teachers, it goes out to the staff, it goes out to custodials, it goes out to every single person that spent the entire year. You all deserve a huge thank you, not just the retirees, because we always thank... I always thank the retirees, but everybody that gets involved with our school district. It's another year. Hopefully, you all get to go and recharge over the summer because you're gonna have another year to come up, and it's gonna be something else that will be new and hit you with. But I really think you all deserve a very, very heartfelt thank you to each and every staff member, custodial, and I mean, every person that's involved in the school district from top to bottom. You all appreciate... we appreciate everything. So, on behalf of me and the school board, thank you very much.
If I could just add, we do have one teacher in the room who was instrumental in the graduation ceremony. And I know there were dozens of teachers that were super helpful and did incredible things that night. But since you're here, Seth, Mr. Hori is the one who managed to get... To make sure all of the program was able to do, we were able to do the music programs. We were able to livestream it into the auditorium for Overflow. And quoting Mr. Anzbach, how he pulled that off, how he managed to get livestream up into that... Up into that auditorium in a half an hour was nothing short of amazing. So, thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
One other thing that I think I... and I'm looking at Dr. Smith for confirmation. So, anyone that had diploma covers that might have been damaged by the rain?
We are going to send a letter out that's asking anyone to email us, set up an email, so they can email to request a new diploma cover, and we'll send those out in July.
Okay. For the record, what Dr. Smith just shared is that any student that had a damaged diploma cover, we will be sending out an email next week, and we'll make sure that you get a fresh one. So, thank you.
Yeah, they're flying all over. All right, we're gonna move on to public comment. Do I have any public comment online? I have any public comment here? All right, we're gonna move on to an adjournment for the summer. All those in favor? We'll see you back in August.